Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll move on to the second item of business, which is the election of a chair for this meeting. So I didn't obtain a motion to someone to take over this meeting.
I recommend that Trevor take over this meeting.
Moved by Lauren pushing to recommend Councilor Trevor Cunningham take over the meeting. Do I have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilor Daniel Allen. All those who can reply by saying aye.
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 Contrary minded. Motion carried. Councilor Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor. My apologies, I'm gonna be I'm a little bit preoccupied, but I'll be attending the whole meeting and if I have any comments, I'll certainly raise my hand. Thank you very much, Trevor. You have the you have the chair.
Right, just just to as a matter, a little bit of front matter for folks that weren't there yesterday, the meeting, I think, was very productive. I think it spanned from Digby to Bridgewater, Lunenburg area, sort of the southern area of the province, the western zone. And we met with municipal fairs and housing. And there were several topics on the agenda that we discussed and gave feedback and so forth and saw presentations about. There were some, of course, there was some background matter provided in the workbook package, which we all got and had been asked to complete or also if you attended the meeting, we were able to certainly have some input yesterday. It was very, very well done. So the 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 topics were certainly, I was trying to think, okay, so the topics were, without my workbook in front of me, were number one, the the people running for hot, code of conduct, the code of conduct, yes, thank you Patty, you were there as well, code of conduct, we talked about code of conduct and how that might look and who might oversee it and who might operationalize it. Would it be sort of provincial, would it be municipal, hybrid, you know, would there be, anyway, we'll get to that. The the second topic was people seeking higher office, so municipal councillors who want to run federally or provincially. There was a conversation about that. Then the afternoon, we switched to a whole series of housing type questions. And we'll go through those one at a time and and I'll have to admit that I've got lots to learn in that area. The the first two topics I was pretty conversant with, but those other pieces, I think council needs to spend more time with them and they may or may not be applicable to a to a world setting again. So so what I will do is I will turn to to our C E O, Victoria, and perhaps ask her to put up the the workbook and perhaps we can start working on our our shared response from the municipality of Duffield, Barmah.
I'm gonna share my screen. Um, oh, that's the wrong document. Let me try again. Oh, I think this is what I have to do. I'll try again.
And just in the interim, sorry for the interruption. Any declarations of conflict of interest from folks before we start? If you're hearing none, we'll we'll move on with your business.
Okay, I'm gonna try one more time. Just just bear with me, Mr. Chairman.
You gotta love these Zoom meetings.
Trevor, I think you missed the accessibility discussion as well. Just wanted to toss that one in there. Maybe I clued out, but it's nine o'clock in the morning.
There we go. So um, so as the chairman indicated, you'll see that these were the items in this order that were discussed and I I would say I noted at one point, there were forty six participants in our consultation. I would say half a dozen or so might have been individuals who work for the department. And I know last week, when consultations were getting going in other areas around the province, attendance was in the seventeen to twenty five mark. So perhaps maybe even though we were the last consultation, maybe we were the most well attended, I'm not sure. So this is this is a fillable form where the questions are being posed. So in the first section, we're seeking feedback on the development of a standardized code of conduct for all municipalities. The potential range of penalties that could be imposed on members who are found to have breached the code and an alternative to self governing model that would require an independent review and investigation of breaches under the code. So while we were in the consultation yesterday, some of these questions, there was a live poll. So question number one, please comment on your level of support for the following options. Which option do you support the most? A provincially defined standard that all municipal governments would adopt. Municipal governments define their own code based on a provincial requirements or the current framework that allows municipal government to define their own code of conduct with no provincially defined standards. So this question, there was a live poll yesterday. Sixty four percent of the participants in the consultation chose answer A. Thirty three percent chose answer B and three percent chose answer C. And so the comments around them were largely around trying to develop a framework and councillors who attended jump in and provide additional comment here. Largely, the conversation was around what kind of framework can we build that will not only garner the public trust, but it will also support the application of the code. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure how you want to approach this. I think Councilor Durkey has her hand up.
Ah, yes, just on that, I can't, I've got to, I've got to, yes, Councilor Durkey. Sorry, I've got to, okay, now I've got everybody on screen. My apologies.
No, no apology needed. So it was a really good discussion on that yesterday and I think what it came down to or some of the decisions were in the end, because Trevor made a really good point that that, you know, we're being asked some of these questions at the beginning of the discussion. And after hearing a lot of the discussion, then then, you know, you may have changed your mind on how you polled on these questions. So Trevor, great point there. I just personally, I feel like a provincially defined code that all municipal governments must adopt is is important and that would be my choice. And the reason being is because we need to have something consistent across the board that all municipalities can can follow. And the consequences also need to be consistent. So what happens for one, happens for another. What one person brought up is, well, yes, I would like to have a provincially defined standard, but also be able to make municipally stronger consequences. That was one person. That was an interesting discussion, but personally, I just want to say my thoughts are for the first one.
And oh, Mr. Cushion, Councilor Cushion.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. I don't know if you guys can hear me or see me. All I've got is the discussion of yesterday, right? Can you hear me all right?
Absolutely, I can.
Okay, good. I chose B and the reason why municipal governments define their own code of conduct based on based on provincial guidelines. We are, we are, we're gonna base our code of conduct on the requirements that the the province has laid out for us. When you look back at A, again, we find that the province is telling us what we have to do. I think we've been elected by our residents to to make our own decisions on that, as long as we follow the guidelines based on provincial requirements. So that's why I choose chose B. I, it seemed like this process that we went through, again, I I gotta say, it was a rush. It took all day to do, but it's it's a rush for us to make decisions without everybody having a chance really to digest what was going on. I I don't want to make a decision that that in a week's time or a month's time, I'll say, oh gee whiz, I really shouldn't have made that decision. You know, but now I've read it all, you know, I should have done something different, right? So that's my, that's my logic of it. I don't like being pushed to make this, to make quick decisions and and I've always been that way. And I I just don't feel that the province should be dictating that to us. What we need to do as a council. It takes in, it's taking away a council's decision on 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 different matters. You know, I think, you know, just give you some background, I was, I did a lot of number of funnicks through Hockey Canada and Hockey Nova Scotia and abuse and harassment and abuse of power, false allegations and so on and so on. So so if the province is telling us this is what we have to do and I I really don't think that's the proper way to go. I think we gotta have some type of input on our destiny. That's that's my opinion, Trevor. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilor Cushion, for using the the hands up technology. And for all the other councillors, I I would like to use that rather than just physically putting up our hands. So if you go down to the participants icon at the bottom of your screen and you click on that, you can raise your hand once you clicked on that. So I did see Patty with her hand up. Patty, Councilor Durkey.
Thank you. I I just need to clarify something that Lauren may not be aware of. And that's is that it's NSFM that initiated this code of conduct as a result of some of the information or the meetings that were had from the conferences. So this code of conduct has actually been in the works for quite some time. So the NSFM came up with with basically the code and they submitted it to to the government for review and it's been sitting on the government table for quite some time. So that's just maybe something that you weren't, that you weren't aware of where it originated. So it it might change your perspective just a little.
Thank you. Got to Councilor Cushion.
Well, okay, you say NSFM has been dealing with it. I don't know if we were copied on any information that that was that was discussed at NSFM, but if there was, I I certainly probably must have missed it. But and again, I'm just gonna say, you know, I know NSFM is a very important, important part of our our province and our mandate and our I forget what the other word I want to use, but I I still think that, you know, if that was the case, NSFM, we should have had, our council should have had some discussion on it personally. Thank you.
I don't see any additional hands up, but I would like to speak to the issue myself. Good points from Councilor Cushion and Councilor Durkey. And I was, I will admit that I was the outlier in the group. I I said the current framework that allows municipal government to define their own code of conduct, no provincially defined standards and that the rationale for that is I'm, I I'd like for us to be careful or from my perspective, about ceding too much control to others. We were elected to govern and I think given recent events that that we've proven that you know, with with staff and and doing our governance piece and doing our policy piece, we've done well. I'm not sure, and I wasn't sure, and I didn't ask a follow up question yesterday because I just didn't think of it at the time, but potentially defined standard, I'm not sure if that's the province giving us one or if it's gonna be in concert with NSFM. Just just how that's gonna be, but certainly there's merit in all three options. I can see merit in all three options, but I mean, for me, I'd like to proceed cautiously and to Councilor Durkey's point initially, that that was sort of my without knowing all the details, it's tough and working backwards, it's tough to know. You know, which of those three options I I choose because we don't really know what's in the code of conduct as well. So depending on how far the the less far reaching is, the more likely I would be to to want a provincially defined standard. The more far reaching and comprehensive, not that's a bad thing, but it would include lots of behaviors. The the less certain I'd be of wanting a provincial standard. So those are my comments, but certain, I I would probably at this juncture, go in the middle in favor of B. Are there anybody, any other comments on the issue? First question. So yes, Ms. Brooks.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure how you'd like to do this, but where we where we have to give a definitive answer, as in this case. If you could just find a way so that we could go around the table clearly, so there's no ambiguity.
Absolutely, and I'll and I'll and I'll state a methodology and if everybody's approving the methodology, we'll use that to move forward. So what I'll I'll throw there is that we'll we'll each kind of say which option, A, B, or C. And then we'll we'll try to have a little conversation about about if it's clear which option is is the one we should choose, we'll we'll choose that numerically. And if there's, if there's, if it's not as clear, if it's, we'll have a conversation about about which option we might might choose. So I'll I'll start off with Patty. Patty, you've already said your option's A.
My option's A, but I just want to throw in there that that one of the important issues is that I I believe about the whole code of conduct, not necessarily is that there are defined standards by the province, but that a third party outside of our own municipalities look after or get involved in the consequences with regards to investigations. I and I just want to say I found that very challenging, that, you know, everybody, it was hard for us, especially some of you who are really close to Leland in the situation that we had had, that to to be you have to be objective and not subjective. And I think we did a really, really good job with that. But it would be easier to have someone out from outside. So in terms of even, you know, the standards, like I think we did a really good job and that was our own code of conduct. But again, when it comes down to in the end, who who investigates? It it needs to be somebody from outside the community and that and that has a an impact on the code itself. So yes, I'm still with A.
Okay, Councilor Cushion.
Oh, shoot, hang on, I did something. Okay, yes, you hear me all right?
Yes.
I okay, I I'm gonna stick with my B. And I think we beat up I think we beat up Leland enough that we shouldn't be bringing him up anymore. But having a third party to determine whether right or wrong, I I totally disagree with it. Again, I will say we were elected to make decisions and at times we have to make tough decisions and we did make a tough decision and and that's what I think we should go forward with, making tough decisions when we have to. You know, so, you know, I I like to be able to have the freedom for for me to speak on 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 my thoughts, whether it's a yea or a nay and not being held. How can I say the proper wording without without being lack of better words, maybe this is not the proper word, being being threatened that if I don't do the right thing, I'm accountable for it, you know, to the to the voters. I I don't like that kind of stuff. I think that we're elected, we're elected to make decisions and we're elected to make tough decisions. We're elected to to have the voice of the municipality. And and I think that's the way it should be kept. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Cushion. We'll go next to to Councilor Allen.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council Cunningham. I didn't take part in this yesterday. I I had other commitments. As I'm reading this, I'm kind of, I guess, maybe maybe you or Patty or Victoria could could answer. I I'm assuming, I shouldn't assume anything, but it's saying provincially defined. So I'm reading it and I'm reading it maybe differently. I'm just kind of reading it as in the municipalities are just trying to to define a code of conduct that each municipality would follow. It's not necessarily that the province is going to dictate to us what the code of conduct is. I I don't believe they I'm reading it as in, we're just showing it to the province for approval, but it's going to actually be our definitions. So there will be one set of code of conduct for everyone. I still believe if that's the case, that if someone breaches that code of conduct, it would still be up to the the particular municipality to to determine. I mean, if there's more than one type of, I'll call it punishment, but it would be up to that particular municipality to to adopt what they're going to do as consequences for the breach of conduct. Am I, am I writing assuming that or is it just that the province is going to define it and if someone breaches it, someone else sets sets the is going to define what happens to the person that breaches it?
So my my take on that, and I brought that issue up, it does say small p, it's not big P kind of provincial. So I I think my understanding is, and that should really be clarified, that's a question we can ask. But I would think that it would be developed in concert with all municipal units through NSFM. But ultimately, if it's passed into legislation, provincial politicians would would, I believe, vote on it. So it depends on the mechanism. So all I have to say is, I I'm not sure and these are early days, so I think those are details that maybe we can have our C E O follow up with and and get a little bit more of an answer and 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 the answer may not be known at this point entirely, right, how that's gonna work. So that that's what I could share. But if anybody else around the table and wants to speak to that issue, please do.
Because because just back to that, back to that, Mr. Chair, is that I understand that, you know, it's something we were putting forward, the province will pass it. But once they pass it, I'm assuming that just means that all it becomes law for everyone to follow. So as long as it's just a code of conduct and actions of someone that may breach that code of conduct would would be would be alleviated by the actual municipality, it just, I guess, if it's sending out that it would be the same for everyone. As long as it's not taking everything out of the municipality's hands, you know, I I don't believe it should be completely removed from the municipality's hands. I think we should have some say, like Lauren said, we would all have a vote if it's someone on our on our council that breaches, then then obviously I think that we should all have a vote on on what is to be done at the end of the day.
So so there was some conversation about about that. I see Patty's hands up, so I'll let her speak just in a sec. I'll I'll go to her in a second. But there was some conversation, it was uncertain, like that the council would actually hear some of the allegations maybe in camera because they're not proven and like that's a private matter and then come out, open council probably and send and send the matter to to the province potentially, like a a committee to look into the issue. Some others believed it should be a municipal solicitor that would look in and investigate as we do have it now. So those details aren't aren't totally known, but I will pass things over to to Councilor Durkey. She's got her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this is consultation and the province from NSFM is asking for our input to say, how do you want to, how do you want to proceed with this? How, what is it, what do you want it to look like? So it's our responsibility as councillors and deputy wardens, etc., wardens and mayors to come up with what we feel would be a standard for across the province and my understanding, well, there's no understanding because consequently, if this, we we're deciding right now what we want. And so this will be whatever we decide in general across the province will be taken to the legislature and decided on. So if we decide that we want to well, though, wait, let me rephrase that. They'll come up with consequences based on what we feel should be, like a level leveling of consequences, like first could be a reprimand, second could be anger management, whatever. But but this is where we're this is why we're being consulted, because what do what do we want to happen? I don't know if that helps, Dan, but that's what they're putting together.
So so what what was it you told me is that NSFM has already submitted?
They did. They've been consulting with the province on this for quite a while. We've had discussions about this at not just us, but at the conferences that have been happening, not NS, just NSFM people, but but the fall conference, there was a code of conduct workshop that happened a couple of years ago. Lauren, I believe you were actually there where there was a big discussion about code of conduct and I think that's what started this whole process that that they wanted to look at, yep, we need a code of conduct, yep, lots of inappropriate behaviors are happening across the province and and what can we do about it?
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering why this consultation never took place before they submitted anything to the province. Like, to me, this would have been the first step.
There there has been information that's been coming out about the code of conduct.
Yeah, no, I realize that, Patty, but now they're asking us, now they're asking us for our opinion when they've already submitted something. So I'm just wondering why or why it wasn't sent out to the municipality. This this is, I think, a great idea. I'm just wondering why at this point. Like, it seems to me stuff has already been done. This should have been the very first step to me.
Well, there was consultation. That's that's already been done. That's with everybody across the province who were invited to different, to workshops across the province that happened, I think it was two years ago, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that's where it all started, where people started, did put their input. So then NSFM came up with a draft. As you saw, this is just a total draft so that now, once you have some information out there, you can go back and look at it and define what specifically you wanted. If we didn't have a draft, I think it would be all over the place. So it's just making it easier for people to follow.
Okay, so I'll I'll go where I see Ms. Brooks has her hand up. I'll recognize her.
Because my screen is shared, the raise hand function isn't available to me, so I'll just reach out to the chairman in the chat when I'd like to address council. So to Councilor Durkey and Councilor Allen's point, this is exactly what is frustrating to the NSFM. This has been on the NSFM's priority list for a number of years and exactly what we're experiencing here is what the NSFM is finding is happening with their members. The initiative is getting somewhat stale dated and so people are having trouble tracking along with the file and making sure they're understanding the process and where we are. And so this is why NSFM has been advocating to the province to get this topic addressed and and to move forward. What I what I wanted to comment on was around option, option B is an option that particularly where it would be a new initiative would allow the province to create a standard, a universal standard across the board, but it would also allow municipalities to customize based based on their unit. Now, what we heard yesterday, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that under option A, if a municipality wanted to be more strict, they could as well.
So that, thank you. All I see, Councilor Cushion's got his got his hand up, but I I will defer to Councilor Allen because he's not yet selected the the A, B, C.
Thank you, Council Cunningham, and I'll select, I'll select B.
Okay, B, yeah. And Councilor Cushion, did you want to have some input or say something prior to us moving forward with with others?
Yes, I, yes, I do, Trevor. I I agree with what Victoria was saying about 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 we could, we could, we have a standard to follow, but we could increase our our, lack of better words, punishment. However, NSFM been discussing this for a couple of years and yes, I did sit on that, I sat in on that session. that, I sat in on that session about code of contact. Yes, I do agree with that we need a code of contact in place. But my trouble is, if NSFM, and no disrespect, Patty, you are a member that represent us, our area, for NSFM, that should have been, to me personally, I think this should have come back to our council, so we could have had a more thorough discussion on it, and we probably wouldn't be in this place right now. But I'm sticking with my B.
Thank you, Counselor Cushing. I'll move on to Counselor LeBlanc. Counselor LeBlanc, A, B, or C?
I think I'm gonna depend on Patty. She's our NSFM representative. She read about it. She knows what's going on. And I believe in that one, in number eight.
Number eight, yeah. And thank you, Counselor LeBlanc. Counselor Cunningham, the other Counselor Cunningham. John, you there? Okay, so we'll,
Yes, I'm here, Trevor. Sorry about that.
No worries. John, we're looking at A, B, or C is the preferred option.
Everybody's bringing up very good points about this. I would actually prefer B, to tell you the truth. I do see Counselor Durkey's point, but at the end of the day, Counselor Allen had made quite a strong argument, and that's the way I was going in. I must admit that I could not attend the meeting yesterday because I had other meetings with different groups and stuff. So I'd like to thank Counselor Cunningham, Counselor Durkey, and Counselor Cushing for attending that workshop. I'd much appreciate it. B is my answer.
Thank you very much for your kind words. And as Chair of the meeting, I selected C in the session, but I will select B. So I'll ask Ms. Brooks, maybe, if it's all right with everybody and we can get consensus, maybe we can even share the level of detail, like that, you know, four of the six counselors preferred B and two A, but I believe it's dependent on, you know, I think another conversation needs to take place is the code of conduct, the way in which we're going to approach the code of conduct becomes clearer, because I think, again, to Patty's point, you know, I mean, the devil's in the details, so to speak. So the details may actually cause individual counselors or councils as a whole to change your opinions on any of these questions, this one or subsequent questions. So is that all right by everybody? I'll take silence, it's golden. Okay, thank you. That's all right, Madam CAO? Good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, now I think I see Counselor Durkey has her hand raised just before you move on quickly, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes, yes, she did, yeah. I see it. Counselor Durkey.
Thank you. You know, going through this whole thing, I'm just wondering at some point if, you know, the province does come up with a standard code of conduct, whether, I mean, like B is, you know, we would define our own conduct based on provincial requirements. If people would have, or municipalities would have the choice to adopt what they have come up with, or our own at some point, it could be an option, right? So once they do it, yes, I'm going to use that, or no, I'm not. And that might be something to consider, too.
Well, I think that's a good point, and I think that honors what Counselor Cushing had to say, is ultimately it would be our choice to do that or not. So if Victoria could record that, is an idea. I think that would be a positive thing. Because at that point, we could choose to, as a council, the future council, I could choose to adopt it. And again, adopt it or not, and it may be even in whole or part, I'm not certain. So good point, Counselor Durkey. Thank you. So I guess we've concluded conversation on that issue? Perhaps we can move to the next question. Victoria's just writing on the screen, so once she advances the screen, we'll move on to the next question.
This is what you call working on the fly. So the second question, what topics should be included in code of conduct? For example, conduct on social media, improper use of influence or municipal assets, impartiality, prohibition on gifts, benefits, et cetera. So in the document I emailed to council yesterday, it included a series of topics that the NSFM's draft proposal included. So how elected officials represent a municipality, how they communicate on behalf of the municipality, and so on. And then in the margins, there were comments from the AMA NS and myself. And so I will, before you jump into your dialogue, I would recommend that we predicate anything we're going to say in this section around, within the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, we recommend, because there are some concerns around freedom of speech and self-expression. And so I think that if we right out of the gate preface your comments with, you know, under the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, and then whatever your opinions are.
Agreed. So topics, do we want to go around, or do we just want to have people put up their hand and offer some topics? That could be included, should be included in the code of conduct? Okay, I'll perhaps start things off. I would say in the parentheses and in the question itself, I think that improper use and influence municipal assets, one that we should include. I see Ms. Brooks with her hand up.
Just a suggestion, Mr. Chair, but with the interest of efficiency and effectiveness in mind, the topics that the NSFM included, does anybody have any objections to those topics? Maybe not the points listed below them, but the actual topics. Are we wanting to adopt, you know, the pieces that the NSFM has already put forward, or are there some we want to eliminate?
So would you read those off for everybody's benefit?
Sure, and we'll go slowly. So the first bullet is how elected officials represent a municipality. So would we want a code that says the code needs to speak to that? So maybe each municipality would provide its own framework under that, but that the code should speak to that.
So I'm seeing nobody's hand up, but I mean, my question about that is that's very vague, how they represent the municipality. I'm not just certain what that means.
Well, you would, so what I think I'm understanding is, is that if we say that that's a topic that should be in the code, do we want to say as Modi that, while we want that topic in the code, we want Modi to define it for Modi? Counselor, Deputy Warden Cunningham has his hand up.
Deputy Warden Cunningham.
I don't know if I agree too much with that, because everybody has their own leadership style and what they like to do around in the municipality. And I think our different styles complement the municipality as a whole, because obviously some people would approach me because I'm very outgoing, and other people might approach Counselor Cunningham because he's in the professional field, and he deals with that a lot. So I'm a little leery of including how a counselor, or at least be very vague if we're going to nail it down on how a counselor acts. That's just my opinion.
Good point, Counselor Cunningham. I agree with that. I mean, I share that opinion. I think whatever we include as general themes in the code of conduct, I think we should be able to easily fill out the details underneath and sort of things that are clearly prohibited, and then investigator could come to us and say, you know, clearly they breached this, not, there'd be almost no question, if that makes sense. So I mean, we can put it, I'm scared where that might go. But I mean, we can, so if ever, I guess we've got one person speaking against that, so are any other, anybody's going to speak for that, that inclusion of that point? Okay, so, oh, yes, Counselor Durkey.
Thank you. I'm just, if I may, recommend that Victoria read the items to consider that she included in the email that was sent out last night. It might be of benefit.
Yeah, she read the first one.
No, but underneath the first one, there is a recommended list of,
Okay.
Yeah.
Good point.
So, Mr. Chairman, what the NSFM is submitting to government, because they are allowed to submit a response, is under how elected officials represent a municipality, the NSFM is advancing that that would be defined as, in good faith, serving the interests of the whole municipality and not the specific district or ward of the elected official. Now, the AMA NS has some concerns around that under the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, in a conscientious and diligent way with accountability and transparency, with professionalism and routine participation in council activities, conducting themselves in a manner that will bear close public scrutiny and instill public confidence. What the NSFM is saying, how elected officials represent a municipality should be defined by those four bullets.
Any comments from counselors on that, now that we know sort of the flavor of what the NSFM is proposing? I have a comment. I think that should not be included. I think that is just a way too broad and speaks to, you know, I mean, there's no clarity around that, and I don't know how you'd ever parse out the difference between representing the whole municipality and the district you're in. I mean, we kind of know it when we see it, but I think that that's just a recipe for conflict for no particular purpose. So I would recommend that we note that and that we say we're not in favor, but I'm certainly welcome dissenting opinions on that. Lauren, Counselor Cushing?
Okay, you had to turn my mute off, right? You know, that really grabbed my attention right off the bat. Again, I will say, yes, in good faith, I am serving the interests of the whole municipality. However, I've also, I was also elected by the citizens of District Six, that if they had concerns, that they could contact me. And I would either point them in the right direction, or I would contact our CAO and let her know what those concerns were, and we go from there. So it almost, again, I'm a little nervous of having, I'm having the province telling us what we could do and what we shouldn't do. We are a very unique municipality. I'm very confident of that. We, over the years, we have, it just shows how frugal we've been with a lot of infrastructure that has been done, and I'd like to keep it that way. A lot of infrastructure is based on not only good decisions by council, but also is, some of it is definitely a feedback from the residents who voted us in there. You know, if they decided, for instance, project A, they weren't really in favor of it, you know, so I would be able to voice my opinion that, you know, my district's not in favor of this. So, but again, I'm one vote, but I'm relaying the voice of District Six. So I think that's very important that we, you know, that's made to be understood for the right, not that I'm going to be able to have a big influence than anybody else. It's just the point is, I'm representing District Six. Yes, in good faith, I'm serving the interests of the municipality, and I want the municipality to be successful. But again, I don't want people pushing us around or pushing me around, saying that I have to do this. And I like to have my own opinion. Thank you.
So I see Patty. Patty, I recognize Patty. Counselor Durkey?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Cunningham. I just want to say that what it says here, these are just items to consider. They're not something that's set in stone. They just, and this is good. This is the whole point of this, is to have good dialogue around some of these suggestions that are being made, whether, you know, if it's a yay or nay, whether you want it to be included. But it is good for initiating discussion.
So hearing that, we will have to comment. So I'm going to propose, as far as methodology, let's go through each of these NSFM proposals, and as a council, say yay or nay generally to them. So yes or no, almost like we did the ABC choice. So everybody think that's a good idea? Because then we'll have something to put down on paper, because we discussed the thing a little bit, and I think everyone understands. So if Ms. Brooks will just read that again, then we can go around the table and just say, you agree or not agree with the inclusion?
How elected officials represent a municipality as defined in the following way: in good faith, serving the interests of the whole municipality and not the specific district or ward of the elected official; in a conscientious and diligent way with accountability and transparency; with professionalism and routine participation in council activities; conducting themselves in a manner that will bear close public scrutiny and instill public confidence.
So let's go around and say yes or no to inclusion of that topic is kind of conceptualized by, in the way in which it's been presented. So I'll start off with Patty.
Yay. Yes, I agree that some of those things should be, I don't necessarily agree that all of them should be in there, but I think that, you know, most of them are things that we would do anyway. So I think it's really important that professionalism, and still things that instill public confidence in us, being conscientious, accountable, and transparent are all part of being a counselor.
Okay, Lauren, yes or no?
I would say yes, but again, there is certain items on there that may could be adjusted somewhat. And in general, in general speaking, I would say the points are valid. And, but, you know, I just, anyway, I would say yes.
Deputy Warden Cunningham?
I'm a nay. I think this is a slippery slope we shouldn't be going down. I do agree with a couple of points in there, but as far as the majority of points, I disagree with, so therefore I'm going to have to vote nay on it.
Okay. Counselor Allen?
I vote nay, for the exact same reasons that Counselor John Cunningham just said.
Counselor LeBlanc?
I'll have to vote nay, because not that I agree, it's that I don't understand. I should have been there yesterday and found out a little bit more. So I'm going to vote nay right now, because I don't fully understand it.
And lastly, I'm going to vote nay, and I agree with the counselors that voted yay in terms of them being exemplary things, like everybody I think should be professional. I think everybody should try to represent their area well, and certainly the whole municipality well. I'm just not certain how you operationalize that, because being professional, I don't know what that means, right? And I don't know what the sanctions would be for not being professional, and for not representing would be for not being professional, and for not representing the whole municipality, and for, so I, I just think, I just see this as a, as a, as a quagmire. That's why I'd, I'd say nay. So, so perhaps we can, if it's agreeable with everybody, perhaps we can say that on this issue as a whole, four counselors voted to not include it, and two, two voted to, to include it. I think that gives a little bit more data to the, to the NSFM when we submit the, our response. So, is that agreeable by everybody? Counselor Cushing's got his hands up, or hand up, rather.
Yes, I do, Trevor. You know, I said, I said yea with, with some, some adjustments in there, right? So, number one point. But, number two point, Gerard, Counsel LeBlanc, brought up a very, very, very good point. It's, it was, it's too much to absorb and too much to understand in such a short time. Oh, excuse me. I don't, I don't have a cold. It just, it took on my throat, so. But, he made a very good point that, you know, and again, I said from before we even started, that if I have to make decisions, I can. If I have to make tough decisions, I can. But, I need the information, and I need time to digest this. And this is what Counsel LeBlanc was saying. I, I, I still believe this is a rushed document that we're gonna submit. But, I'm sticking with yea with some, with some, with some modifications, I guess.
Okay. And so, Madam CAO, Victoria, you're, you're going to include that in the response, that four counselors, on, on balance, council, you know, doesn't favor inclusion of that, of that general topic. Four, four said nay. Two said, two said yea. But, clarity, clarity, I guess, is of the essence for everybody, I think. I heard that.
I'm, it's important that the context of your submission is provided. So, what I am thinking I'm going to do is, we're gonna fill out the form and answer the questions, but I think I'm also gonna send in the working document that has all the comments in the margin, that will help provide the context. And we'll, when I send in our email with the two documents, I'll preface that that's why we're doing it, because I'm fairly confident that there'll be a statistical analysis on the document that I'm sharing on my screen. And we have to be careful how we use it, or they won't be able to analyze our response. So, if I send the two different documents, then it'll provide, it'll provide that backup. So, I have recorded the essence of your conversation in the Microsoft Word working.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That sounds good. And so, let's advance, or being, oh, sorry, Counselor Allen?
I guess, I just want to make a note of this. What, we had four vote nay, and three, and two vote yea, and we all had the same comments, that there are some things in it that should be there, and some that aren't. We're all essentially voting for the same thing. It, I don't, I just kind of find it a little funny, I guess, if, if you all understand where I'm coming from. Even the ones that said yea, said, well, there's some things in there that probably shouldn't be. And the ones that said nay, said there's, and they're probably the same things, that some of us would like to see and some of us wouldn't. So, it, it's, it's a, I don't know how to put it. It's, it's kind of a tough thing, because I feel like we're all voting for the same thing, but we're voting in different directions.
I, I agree, Counselor Allen, with, with your point. It, it's a tough thing. Like, everybody knows that these are all good things, but the measurement of it is really, really, really hard. I don't know if I'd want to be tasked with measuring whether or not somebody's being professional.
Exactly.
I don't know what that is. I, I just don't know how to measure it. You know, you kind of know, you see it. It's no problem to say, yeah, that's a very professional thing that person's doing. But, when you say it's unprofessional, I, I don't really have a, a good idea of what, what that, that, that means truthfully. You know, that, that you could, that, I could give some examples, but if a counselor does something and somebody says that's unprofessional, I'm not certain that I could agree with that definition or not, you know?
No, and, and that's what I'm getting at, I guess. That's what I get, I guess, Counselor Cunningham, was the fact that we all kind of mentioned, you know, there, there are some things in there, like operating in good faith, and, and, you know, representing the municipality, transparency. We all agree that those things should probably be in our code of conduct. And there's a few of them that we all seem to agree that they shouldn't be. But, if we have to vote on them as a whole, we're splitting the vote six, four to two. And, but, we all want the same thing. So, it's, it's, that part of, that part of this particular question, to me, is tough. I mean, I'm back to, as far as a code of conduct, we all, I, I agree with what's listed there, relate the, and you've already done it with the improper influence, or, or use of municipal assets, definitely prohibition on gifts and benefits, impartiality should be there, although, I don't know how you actually, again, you, how do you prove impartiality? Maybe that particular word shouldn't be there. It, it's tough to, you know, to list everything that would fall under this, this code. With, I mean, we'd be here for days just on question two.
I think I saw Counsel LeBlanc with his hand up.
Yes, I, I just want to be excused for, for about 10 minutes. I, the excavator just came in my yard, and I've gotta go, I've gotta go tell them what to do and then come back.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll hear from you in 10 minutes. Counselor Cunningham? I don't know who was in the queue first, but they're both hands up.
Yep, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That brings up a good point. You said you don't know what professional is. Now, someone could look at this meeting today and see my dog in a planter, and some people might think that's funny. Some people wouldn't think anything of it. And other people might think that that's unprofessional. So, that's the slippery slope that, that would really scare me about this. And, like, I agree with the taking the gifts and stuff like that. And that's, that's what I'm generally speaking about. When you're talking about conduct and the way that you act and the way you present yourself sometimes, like, I'm not necessarily a suit and tie guy. I'm a mechanic by trade. So, I, I wear those skins. I wear camo. I don't necessarily wear a suit all the time. And some people might say, well, you're not looking very professional. And it's just a, it's a matter of opinion on that. And then, I don't want to get into that argument.
Oh, it's, it's a good point, Counselor. I'm, I'm afraid that, given these things that are ill-defined, and they're very, very hard to define, I'm not certain we want to get into finding it. I, I think we might spend a lot of time not doing councils' business, but having people fingerpoint and say, this person's not doing this, or not doing that. And I would agree, it's a slippery slope. But, I'll go on to Counselor Cushing.
Yes, Counselor Allen brought up a good point, that we, you know, some were for, some were against, but we all had, we all had reasons for a little bit of modification or clarification on it. And then, Trevor, you brought up, brought up the point of the definition of professionalism, not professionalism. And, you know, I'll stick with my yea, because I think it is a good points that are in there with some modifications, as I had mentioned. But, I think we are demonstrating, I think we are demonstrating that we are doing a due diligence here to make sure that our council, and our future councils, know exactly what is in this code of conduct, and how it, conduct, and how it should be handled. So, I think we're, I think we're going down a very good process, and, and I hope we can continue with this, with, 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 with more, with more debate on it, and conversations on it, and suggestions on it. So, anyway, I think that's, I think we're going in the right direction. You know, we, we have a road to go down, but if you're driving down some roads, I won't say we're boozing, it's pretty dirt mumpy, and that's what we have to do. We have to go down those bumpy roads until we get a smooth section. So, anyway, thank you, Trevor. I think you, you made some good points. Daniel made some good points. Patty, and whatnot. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brooks?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want it at all to have a negative impact on, on this very productive conversation. But, as I go through the remainder of the items in the list that the NSFM will be including, I see that they largely relate to adhering to existing municipal policies and bylaws, or provincial and federal legislation around the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, conflict of interest, what the MGA already says. So, you know, knowing that, knowing that, you know, we have a lot of material to get through, could I recommend, Mr. Chair, that in answering number two, we state that the code should require all municipally-elected officials to uphold that municipality's policies and bylaws in all provincial and federal legislation?
I, I think that that's, that's a good way forward, because certainly counselors would be ethically morally tied to following provincial and federal legislation, as well as our bylaws and policies. So, yes. And, I mean, you, you might even want to talk about the, at some point, the difference between a bylaw, which is a law, and a policy, which is something less than a bylaw. So, but, in any event, I think that's, that's a good way to put it. Everybody in agreement with that? I'm seeing no, no hand. Yes, okay, very good. Yeah. Seeing the thumbs up on the technology, very good. So, we'll move on to the next point. Victoria?
I'm out of characters there, so I'm just going to make a note. So, are we okay if we move on to the next question, then? Or are there other topics that people would like to see included that don't appear in the working copy or reflect on the piece we just agreed on?
I'm not, oh, yes, Daniel. Counselor Allen?
I would like to see something in around social media.
Okay, so, Counselor Allen, a lot of municipalities have a communications policy, which sets out those standards for that municipality, and...
That falls under what you just said, then?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I think we're ready to go on to question three. Would you support a model that required an independent body or person, i.e. an investigator committee, to receive and investigate complaints?
Okay, so, the question's there. So, I guess this is a yes and no, with maybe some commentary. That, that seems as though it would be the, I'm still, now, I, my apologies. Okay, yeah, I've got it. Sorry, I'm playing with my technology, just trying to get the list up. So, I've got Daniel. That's his hand up.
I would go with yes on that, such as our, again, we're back to our bylaws and our policies, as, as we've seen. We had passed, you know, things can move over to the municipal solicitor. So, I'm, I'm going with yes to that. I think that in light of, you know, I guess, our transparency and our, just, just to be impartial, to, to hand it out to, to be investigated by someone other than, than our, our own council. I think it requires that. So, I'm going with the yes there.
Okay, and I'll just go through. So, Counselor Durkey?
Yes, yes, I do. I believe that that's the way to go. In reading through, because I'm sitting here reading through some of the comments, I think it's important to have a third party to, to investigate. I, I think it's important for us to have our input, but I would rather see someone outside do the actual investigation. And I also think that there should be timelines associated with that investigation.
Okay. And Counselor Cushing?
Well, you support the, require any opinion about it. Would that be our lawyer? Is that what they're suggesting?
Could be.
Okay. If that's the case, I would, I would suggest that. But, I don't want, no, I don't want anybody with a problem to tell us what to do. So, but, if we have our own lawyer investigated, which, which he has done in the, in the past, I think that's, I think that's the way to go. So, I would say...
John Cunningham? Counselor Cunningham?
Sure.
Yes. Counselor Allen was a yes. Counselor LeBlanc is on break. And I, I would also say yes. I would add in that there was some conversation yesterday about, like, the complaint comes to council first, and we vet it to see whether or not it's something that would, would generally move forward. I'm not certain what folks think about that. Like, is, is it something that can be dealt with sort of under policy with, with the CAO, or is it something, or is it, or is it just a complaint that's really not valid, that clearly doesn't, you know, break any, any, any law, or any of our bylaws, or any of our policies? And so, so that was a nuance there. And I see Patty's got her hand up. So, maybe she could also share a little bit about that.
Yeah, part of the, part of the issue with that is that people need to be able to feel comfortable about reporting an incident that, that has happened. And they may not feel comfortable going to council with it, particularly if it's someone on council who has exhibited his behaviors that, that, that the person has not felt comfortable with. So, the idea was that, part of it is that there's a body or someone you can talk to, because we've never had that as counselors, someone to go to, to, to have that discussion of whether or not, is this something that is, is, is a breach of the code of conduct or not? I think that's really hard, just to come back to council and have council judge, you know, what, what you're going through.
I, I would agree with that, Counselor Durkey. And, and they are looking at other jurisdictions, like Ontario, BC, I would expect, and, and what they have in place in terms of operationalizing these, these code of conduct issues. So, in any event, I, I think, I think we've got unanimity on the, on the yes, but, but with some additional conversation moving forward. So, any, any other comment on this question?
What I've written, Mr. Chairman, is, the question is interpreted to mean that the third party would be someone other than the respective council. Modi is generally in support of this while maintaining as much municipal autonomy as possible, and respecting the need for impartiality in a culture for safe reporting.
I think that summarizes nicely. Thank you. Okay, so, no further comment. We'll move on to the next question. Madam CAO?
Question four, Mr. Chairman, reads, "Who should render the decision as to whether a member has breached the code?" And so, what we've said in our Violence in the Workplace policy with respect to elected officials is that the solicitor is responsible to make a determination on if, if an infraction has happened. There, there are lots of pieces. So, research from other jurisdictions suggests that a third-party panel, board, or commission or tribunal is best, including peers of those being investigated. My notes from yesterday basically indicate that somebody has to make a decision, and it has to, it has to be based on metrics that are measurable. I'm not sure if any of the other participants took other takeaways from that.
Well, and, and again, I'll just, I'll just add in that, that, you know, I, I believe that's absolutely true. And whenever tough decisions, as, as Counselor Cushing says, have to be made, your, your metrics are very, very important. I mean, you really have to have something that you can hang your hat on. And, again, that, that's very, very important. And the, the decision, I, I think it all depends on, on what it is you're deciding. I mean, is it about, is it a, in this case, it's a, it's a member, so it's council. So, to Patty's point, there's advantages in having a third party outside, entirely separate from the, from the council, working on these. So, again, I guess that's a, a difference between who, who you talk to and who makes the decision. So... So, I guess that's what I could add in, that maybe they should be different people as well, maybe the same person. I'm not sure what the models look like in other jurisdictions. So, that's all I can really offer. But I see that we have a hand up, and it's councillor Cushing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess this is why we have a lawyer. Hard, what's the proper word for it? He's hired, he's on retention, I guess. That's what we have a lawyer for. And I think our lawyer has proven himself worthy. So, I, you know, that's what... I think we're doing the... I think we're going on the right path, myself. Thank you.
So, I guess ultimately, maybe the question really is, do we believe that council should make this decision? Or should it be somebody external make the decision in terms of meting out guilt or innocence and some sort of punishment? Or sanction? Is that the... I think that's what the question is. Is that what the question is? Is that what you see the question is, folks?
Well, I don't see punishment being... Or, sorry, not punishment, consequences being part of this question, Mr. Chairman. This question, to me, seems to be limited to who should render the decision as to whether a member has breached the code.
Agreed. I overstepped. Correct, that didn't include that other piece. So, that's a good piece, Clary, thank you. So, yeah, who should do that? Should it be our... I guess we've got two frames of thought that I see. We've got our internal solicitor, which we currently use, and then we've got somebody external to the organization. So, I see councillor Durkey has her hand up. And then councillor Allen.
My personal opinion is that someone outside should be making that decision. It should be a team of people who investigate and review all the information and make that decision. I feel that it's very difficult for even our solicitor, or anybody solicitor who has been working with a team of people to render a decision on that breach. My personal opinion is outside, because it's more objective than subjective.
Okay, thank you. We've got councillor Allen with his hand up.
Yes, my opinion is just the fact that if we are going outside to have someone do the investigation, then at the conclusion of the investigation, there should be a rendering as to whether it was a breach of Code of Conduct or not. So, whoever the investigator or investigators are, that should be who should be... If they're doing the investigation, they should be the ones essentially just saying, yes, it was a breach, or no, it was a breach.
Okay, I see councillor Cushing's got his hand up.
Again, thank you, Trevor. I'm going to stick with our, in our case, our lawyer that we have. He has been involved with our policies and bylaws and whatnot, with the legal part of it and whatnot. So, he would be the most familiar with whether a breach has been taken or not, and bring it back to council with his opinions. So, and I'll stick with that. Thank you.
Okay, so, Pat... Okay, so, maybe what we can do is go through just quickly, and we can say whether it's an external party, whether that's a singular person or a group of people, external or internal to the municipality. And our solicitor would, of course, be an internal person, and somebody from the province or outside would be, or SFM, or, you know, an individual or group of people making a decision would be external. So, Patty, I hear you saying internal, correct?
External.
External, sorry, yeah. I missed you. External, yeah. Councillor Allen, internal or external?
Well, the question before, I think we went to an independent body, which I would assume would be external anyway. So, I'm going back with external, I guess, because I believe whoever... If we're qualifying somebody enough to do the investigation, then their recommendation at the end of the investigation should be what we're looking at.
And when we say external, that's not our solicitor? Okay. Deputy Warden Cunningham, internal or external?
External.
External. Councillor Cushing? Internal or external?
I'm going to stick with my internal one, because I'm just worried about the external factor. If... Who's going to say? If it's some type of committee, who's going to say that that external committee, it might be somebody on that who might have, lack of better words, grudge, or something that would be a deciding factor against the person who is being accused.
Okay. Councillor LeBlanc is not back yet, but he'll be back shortly. Oh, councillor LeBlanc is back. Very good, yeah.
I've been back in eight minutes.
Oh, awesome, I didn't see you there.
So, external doesn't mean our solicitor.
Does not mean our solicitor. No, that would be the internal choice.
So, correct me if I'm wrong. We've already gone through this with a real example that happened just a couple of weeks ago by our solicitor. It seems to me like it worked quite well. He knows the law, he knows the code, and I would go with internal.
Internal? Yeah, and, you know, I'm in agreeance with that. And I also think internal, although there are certainly reasons to have an external body. But I just think it's... Given that we've had that and had good success with it in the past, I would say internal as well. So, I think what we're getting is three and three. And again, I don't think it's polarized as it looks. I think either option can work. So, Madam CAO, is you able to record that and provide the feedback?
In the working document, I have that recorded. But, Mr. Chairman, on the document that we're sharing and we're working through live, my recommended wording is, "Modi feels a third-party, singular or panel, who can do the work impartially, should make that determination based on measurable and defensible metrics. The group or person who conducts the investigation should be responsible to make the determination on whether or not the code was breached." I think if I'm hearing you all correctly, whether it's internal or external, your highest value is that it's impartial.
True. Yeah, anybody else want to comment on that statement? And I think that's the rationale for the split in opinion. I think it's more important that the person's impartial rather than their internal or external, although we all have feelings about that and opinions. Okay, let's move on to the next question. There'll be no further conversation on that one.
So, what information should be available to the public on these matters related to a breach of code? So, I will share now that we are walking through this, as you're all aware. And our solicitor is working right now to do a legislative review to try to figure out what the law says about this question. Now, there is a school of thought that says it's recommended that reports on misconduct investigation should be made public on at least an annual basis. It's recommended that this information should be a matter of routine disclosure. Members of the public should not have to file Freedom of Information requests to find out about misconduct or the elected officials. So, my own view on this is that there is a basis for council disclosing the fact that a complaint has been filed and an investigation is pending. And other than that, I'm waiting for a legal opinion from our own solicitor to answer that question.
So, I don't see any hands up, but I think that's sage advice. I think that you can only do what's within the confines of the law. So, but I certainly like the idea of releasing this information routinely. People shouldn't have to dig. We should be transparent. They shouldn't have to come and ask for it. We should give it where it's proper to give it. And I see councillor LeBlanc with his hand up. Councillor LeBlanc?
I don't know too much about the media or whatever, but it's looking... Looking at, watching the news a lot, it seems like when somebody holds in information and then the public finds out, it makes it worse. If the information was put out right away, then the public would forget about it very fast. But if you withhold information, then they go with the idea that you're trying to hide something, and it blows up. It makes it worse. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, councillor LeBlanc. I would agree with that. And I think if any organization has a practice of releasing information routinely and transparently, and people don't have to fight to get it, I think that also goes a long way with trust in an organization and trust that the organization's doing the right thing and providing information where they can. Thank you. Any additional comment on that question?
Patty's got her hand up.
Oh, Patty, yeah. Councillor Durkey.
Oh, I agree completely. We don't want people to make assumptions. And that can go either way, where if it's more positive or more negative than what has actually happened. So, yes, I totally agree that we need to be transparent. And if something happens that breaches our code, then the public should know.
Absolutely. Thank you, councillor Durkey. Any additional comments on that question? Okay, thank you. Thank you all, well done. We'll call on Ms. Brooks to go to the next question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the next question reads, "What sanctions should be available for effective enforcement of a Code of Conduct?" And so, in the working document, there's a discussion around what's happening in other jurisdictions that relates to financial implications in terms of fines or sanctions. There's a discussion around suspending a member from certain activities on council. There is a discussion on actually removing somebody from office, which is not the same thing as the previously mentioned examples. Other examples of sanctions could include letters of reprimand, requests for letters of apology, requests for verbal apology, sensitivity training, anger management training. So, it's a combination of restorative justice and training and consequences kind of a thing. So, in the working document, in the margins, I did a little bit of digging around for members of parliament and members of the Legislative Assembly. And by and large, it appears that they use, you know, a sanction process whereby if somebody operates outside of their code, that maybe their position on committees or in cabinet are at risk. There's usually some sort of restorative process. And then if the feeling is that the member needs some support with respect to training, that that has been ordered. I never found much in terms of fines.
I don't see anybody's hand. I would think that that seems reasonable. I mean, I'm not certain that we want to get into... I don't know what the legalities of that are, fining somebody and removing somebody from council. The MGA, I'm sure, I'm not absolutely certain what it says about removing somebody from a council seat. We know that, in our case, that we vote for the warden and there are mechanisms under the MGA to remove somebody from that position, and so on and so forth, now and moving forward. So, I think that what you've read sounds reasonable, but the fine piece and the removal from council, we'd have to know more about that. Any other comments from around the table? And removal from committees, that's a good sanction. And that also respects the right of the councillor who was duly elected to attend regular council meetings and cast their vote. That's a good... And I believe that the asking for an apology, that's a good thing. You clearly ask that they apologize to somebody. And if they don't, then maybe there could be sanctions for stored justice. So, I see councillor Durkey has her hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, you have to look at consequences that fit the crime, per se. So, I mean, the first thing is if someone is rude or bullying or whatever, then, yeah, an apology is the first thing to go to, to help fix the situation. We have to remember that all councillors receive the same amount of money. And if councillors start getting removed from committees, then essentially, they're getting paid for not doing what they're supposed to be doing. That being said, if inappropriate behavior occurs during a specific committee, and that's not working, then they can always try and switch to something, a different committee, if that would work better. But again, the consequences have to fit the crime. And, you know, if you make a mess, you've got to clean it up.
Any additional comments on that point? Perhaps our CAO could... Are you clear about our stance there? Or do we need some additional input to make it clear?
I think I'll read what I've written, and I'll just make sure that there's no strong objections. So, in answer to question number six, "Modi supports a framework around using restorative processes like apologies, training, and possible removal or reassignment on committees and boards as the key pieces for sanctions. It is important that the sanctions are appropriate to the nature of the alleged infraction." I'm just going to take alleged out because it presupposes that you've already affirmed that there's an infraction.
Okay, yeah, I see hands up from Lauren. And again, I'll say silence is golden. I think that seems to be an excellent rendering of what's been council's views. Thank you. Next question, seven.
So, hopefully, this one's a little easier. "Should Code of Conduct and ethics training be mandatory for locally-elected officials?" And so, there was a poll on that one. I thought... Oh, here it is, yes. So, 97% of participants yesterday said yes. Three said no, and zero were uncertain. And then there was a little bit of discussion on when and how often. And by and large, some people felt that definitely immediately following the election and possibly midway through the term.
Yes.
Yes, and so, maybe I'll just go through quickly, because I think I know the answer, but I won't presuppose it. So, I'll just go through quickly. Patty said yes. Councillor Allen?
Yes.
Councillor Cunningham?
Yeah.
Councillor Cushing?
Yes, I put my thumb up there, Trevor, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes. Okay. Councillor LeBlanc?
Yes.
And it's unanimous. I also say yes. And again, there's some of those details we worked out. Like, there was a conversation about having all candidates have it, but some folks thought that was maybe too costly and difficult to institute. So, we'll move on to the next question. There'll be no further comment. Question eight, Madam CAO.
Question number eight is, "Is there anything else you would like to share with us on the Code of Conduct?" So, the NSFM indicated that it's important... that significant improvements are achieved regarding codes of conduct before October 17th. Now, I'm not sure how that will work. And then, um, I, I feel strongly as a CAO that the code should be structured in such a way that nuisance and malicious actions are also spoken to. What constitutes a violation of the code needs to be clear so as to avoid the code being used in petty disputes and democratic, and, um, limiting democratic debate.
I don't see any hands up, but I would agree with that, that statement. That, I, I mean, that, that's my fear on the other side of this. I think we all, all realize that we, we need some additional improvements. But my, the, the, the whole nuisance complaint and, uh, taking up of time on issues that aren't, uh, aren't necessarily relevant nor should be brought up is, is, may become problematic. So I see, uh, Counselor Cushing's got his hand up. Counselor Cushing, you've got the floor.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. Two things. I agree with our Madam C- CAO about the October 17th elections coming up. That's because of the situation we're in now. I think it's, uh, I think we're gonna be rushed again to make a, the quick decision before, before the election. The second part, I believe, is, uh, very, very important, especially when constitute a violation of the code needs to be clear so that to, to avoid the code being used in petty disputes in democratic, democratic, democratic debates. We're all entitled to our own opinion and, um, perhaps my opinion, uh, may differ from, from you, Trevor, but there's no reason for you to, to, uh, to say that I'm wrong and you shouldn't do that. And, uh, I think, I'm trying to think what the word is. Fortissender's, uh, anyway. Anyway, there's a word that I, I can't, I can't think of right now. But anyway, uh, that, uh, I, you know, I, I think that's very important. We should really be able to weigh it out, whether it's legitimate or not. And if the false accusations is, false accusation is a very serious, serious problem because it, it can damage a person's reputation, whether it's right or wrong. If it's wrong, really, it's still gonna, uh, they're still gonna put doubt in people's mind about your decision. So anyway, that's, I, I really, I really enjoy that, uh, that part of it. And, uh, I have to agree with Madam CAO about the October 17th elections. I don't think we have time to do it myself. Okay, thank you.
All, all good points. Thank you. All I had in that, um, and it hasn't been considered, not that I'm aware of, but it may have been, um, given that this is a, uh, gonna be a pretty big issue. We should maybe note that, should there be a review date on this? It can be changed, like, if it goes into effect and we get a year or two into it and there, there are, uh, pieces that need to be changed and it's gone through the legislature. So it all really depends on how it, on how it can act. I, I, I'm not certain of the mechanism for, for, for bringing fruition. So maybe we can make a note that, uh, you know, council would like to see, um, a plan for, for review and improvement, uh, over time. Madam CAO, are you able to comment on that?
Yep, so, uh, what I've got written so far, if possible, the work should provide the framework to support the next slate of municipally elected officials. So it might not be in time for the election, but the NSFM clearly heard from its members that this is a priority and needs to be done. Any code adopted should have a predetermined review once the tool has been tested. And I guess, you know, maybe, Mr. Chairman, just quickly, does everybody agree that, um, there needs to be provision for how to deal with, um, complaints that are malicious or nuisance?
I think we heard that was agreed to, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, I wouldn't want to get in, sorry, Mr. Chair for breaking in, but I have to take this opportunity because I'm running back and forth to this meeting and something up. Uh, I, I, I'm really concerned about the, uh, the malicious, uh, the nuisance complaint. Uh, there, there has to be, uh, at least some protection for the elected officials in that respect because as much as we'd like everyone to like us, it doesn't always happen. So that'd be my big concern about that whole part.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. So, uh, there be no further comment on that. Let's move on to the next question, uh, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. So the next section is with respect to local, locally elected officials running for senior levels of government. And there was great discussion on that yesterday. So what the department is consulting on, um, is, what do you think of a recommendation to require leave for local elected officials when running in a provincial or federal election? Now, uh, what we've heard, what we've heard around this, Mayor Bolivar Getson, um, ran as an MLA and our own Deputy Warden ran as an MLA. And I think what I've heard from Mayor Get, Bolivar Getson yesterday was, the word required seemed to cause the conversation yesterday. What I think the general consensus of the group yesterday was is that, um, any legislation should allow municipal councils to provide a leave, should it be requested. And I'll just leave it on the floor in that way.
So do we have any comment, uh, any questions from councillors?
Yeah, I have a comment, Mr. Chair. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Uh, as, as everyone knows, I did run for, uh, political office in 2013. Um, I, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to answer every question specifically, but please bear with me. What I personally did is I asked council for, for leave absence without pay when the writ was dropped. Uh, there was a lot of questions, uh, after the fact, uh, on another municipal unit because as we all know, I had chaired the ASCA at the time and there was concern from another municipal unit that, that my opinions were, were sometimes vague and then that I was unintentionally bringing some opinions from, from when I got nominated to, that I bring some of those things in and I was propping it. And actually hindsight being 2020, I'd agree with that. I think, since I've already done it, uh, I, I do believe when, when you're, you're, when the writ is dropped, you should, should be without, uh, municipal stipend. But even I think after you win the nomination, that maybe you should be stepping aside, asking a leave absence to council after you win the nomination. Uh, I know some nomination periods are quite a long time. In my case, it was, I believe, three or four months before the writ was dropped. However, I do know that there was candidates out there that were nominated a year and a half. So that's gonna be a little bit difficult to, uh, to control. I don't know if I'm ever gonna run for provincial or federal office again. I, I learned a lot, but, uh, always the saying is out there, be careful what you wish for because, let's face it, municipal politics is tough enough. I, I sometimes wonder how bad provincial or federal would be. But, uh, I think I would go on the consensus of the group. I would just wanted to throw in my two cents, uh, on what I experienced when, when I done that. I tried to be, I tried to separate council business from running as a candidate, but to be very honest, it was quite difficult at times. But when the writ did drop, I was totally out of, out of, uh, council with, uh, leave absence without pay granted by council. So that's my comment on that.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment? I, I would agree that, um, I, I would agree with the, the CAO that that was the consensus yesterday, that generally speaking, they, they talked about the nomination period can be very, very, very long before. So you could be nominated, um, for, for a political party a year in advance. And I'm not certain how many people would want to forego their council duties for a year. And I'm not sure if that would be fair to the, without calling a by-election, that would be fair to the, uh, the electors that elected the, the council members. So, um, when the writs dropped, but I would say basically that the consensus was when the writs dropped, it, it would be up to the candidate to, uh, to request a, a leave from, from the council. And that, I would agree, that would be unpaid. If the person's requesting it, it should be unpaid. I don't think you can request a paid leave. But, um, anyway, those, those are the comments. The party politics piece is, is, is to, to Counselor Deputy Warden Cunningham, that, that, that is a tough piece, but there are lots of people that are involved in, in, with political parties of all stripes, uh, that also are councillors. So that, that, that's a complicating factor as well. So I think, I think it's up to, in my view, it's up to the individual to, um, to make sure there's not the conflict, to declare a conflict where it's, uh, where it's required and to do their council duties that they're, that they're, they're duly paid and duly elected and paid to do. So any additional comments from, from folks around that? Yes, Counselor LeBlanc?
What, uh, I just, what is writ? When, when, when the writ is dropped?
Writ, writ refers to when the election's called, when the, when the lieutenant governor or governor general calls the, calls the election. So it's a first day election, then there's a 30 or 45 day period of campaigning. So that's, that's when the election's actually on, yeah.
Thought that's what it was, but I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
That's a good clarifying port, point for the audience out there especially, yeah. Thank you. Okay, I'm hearing no further comments, so we'll, uh, we'll move on to the next question. Number five, uh, Madam CAO.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was muted. So with respect to, um, before we move away from this section, were there any other issues around a municipally elected official and, and running for another level of government that you wanted included?
I, I, I'm just seeing the response. My apologies, saying if a leave is provided for, oh. Tough with all of the boxes.
I'm gonna highlight it.
Oh, if, if a leave is provided for, yeah. Okay. So, but I, I, I think for clarity's sake, it's, if, if a leave's not provided for, if a leave's requested, because we could actually, I'm not sure if I'm totally clear about the language.
So, so you have to go back to number one. So number one reads, um, what do you think of a recommendation to require a leave? And what Modi is saying is that the legislation should give the respective council the prerogative to grant.
Okay. Yes, okay, thank, thank you. I didn't see the relation there, so it's clear. Thank you.
So were there any other issues around this topic that, uh, we haven't provided for that need to be included? Um, one thing that came out in the conversation yesterday was that, um, it's important that provincial legislation is clear on the issue. So through the Municipal Government Act and the Municipal Elections Act, that, um, it's very clear on what, what the standard is here so that councils know, um, what, what they need to be doing. That would be the biggest, um, follow-up comment that I would, I would have.
I, I would agree. I'm not seeing any additional comments, so are we ready to move on? I, I think we are.
Okay, so section three was around accessibility. And as you're all aware, um, the provincial government enacted legislation in two, either early 2018 or late 2017, oh, 2017, enacted, um, the Accessibility Act. Nova Scotia needs to be barrier-free by 2030. And one of the first steps that we have to take as municipal government is to adopt a plan. So the proposed approach is the department is interested in hearing from municipalities about barriers that might prevent municipal, barriers that might prevent the department from supporting accessibility initiatives. Sorry, barriers that might prevent municipalities from supporting accessibility initiatives. So what they're consulting on is, uh, the department wishes to better understand what barriers prevent municipalities from meeting their requirements under the act and supporting overall accessibility in their communities. So first of all, identifying barriers is gonna be part of the process that we're gonna go through as we develop our plan. So because our plan isn't developed, um, I think that we should preface our answers in this section to, um, that there could be additional information once we go through the process of developing our plan. So question number one, HRM identified the prohibition on granting direct financial support to a business as a barrier to supporting accessibility in their community. Would you, Modi council, support amendments that would allow municipal units to provide financial support to businesses for their accessibility initiatives? Keeping in mind, the Accessibility Act is a provincial piece of legislation and the standards are being set by the province and required by the province.
So, Ms. Brooks, I, I think, I think it's best to go around the, the board and sort of say yes or no to this, um, unless people have additional questions about, uh, to, to clarify. So I see Counselor Cushing's got his hand up. Counselor Cushing, on the floor.
Thank you, Trevor. I don't think the municipality should be supporting, um, financially to, uh, for, um, accessibility programs or, Henry, I, I think it should be, definitely should be the province that chucks money into this and, and we can probably help, uh, we could probably help, uh, determine, uh, the actual need, if, if that's possible. Or that's, I don't know if the need is the proper word I'm looking for, but, uh, you know, the, you know, the possible recommendation that, uh, somebody has put forward. So I don't think the municipality should be funding anything.
Okay, so that's Counselor Cushing. Counselor Durkey?
Sorry, took me a couple minutes to get that.
No worries.
We all, we all do that.
I have mixed feelings on this. I think this is a provincial initiative and I think that they should be directly responsible for it. That being said, um, it, it can be very costly for businesses to become accessible. And I think if there are some areas that we might be able to partner to support business, then, then I might be agreeable. But I, I think there's still so much, uh, unknown yet to, to really make that decision as to how or if we, we support that.
So, so are you more, are you kind of more no or more yes? And I mean, uh, uh, our CAO's recording the comments, so that they'll be reflected too, like, that there's lots more to, to do. And generally speaking, we'd like to help, but give us some ways to help. So is it generally more yes or no?
Uh, I'm being really wishy-washy on this one because I, I do want to support, I certainly want to support it, but, um, but the financial burden, I don't want to take on that financial burden. So, uh, I'll say, would I support amendments that would allow municipal units to provide such support? Yes, because it doesn't say what exactly kind of support.
It says financial support.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to avoid that. Yes, I'll say yes, in a small way.
Okay. Counselor Allen?
I'm saying no. I don't have anything against the province putting in regulations for accessibility because I believe everybody has the same right as everybody else. But again, um, as they put this in, it, they should bear the weight of it. So if it gets pushed to us as far as the financial aspect of it, it's just, to me, another form of downloading and I don't believe that that should be downloaded onto us, that, um, the financial burden should fall on the people that are, are making the requirements.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counsel, Deputy Warden Cunningham?
To reiterate, uh, Counselor Allen's point, uh, downloading and no. Uh, I don't think we should have the responsibility of that, especially with the way that, uh, that we, that we can, uh, generate revenue. The more we get downloaded, the, the thinner is the piece of pie that's going to everybody and, and it can be very expensive to, to Counselor Durkey's point, to, uh, help some businesses get, uh, compliant. So, uh, I'm, I'm a no on that at this time.
Very good. Uh, and we've got to Counselor LeBlanc, uh, Cushing's response, no. Counselor LeBlanc, your response, sir?
Don't, don't we already do that to a certain extent with, uh, or, or, or would that be like a business, uh, the fire departments?
No, that, that, this is, I'm sorry?
Right. Right. So the Municipal Government Act and the Charter for HRM don't allow municipal government to give money directly to private business.
Oh, you're talking... Okay. Private business. I would say no.
Okay. No for councillor LeBlanc. And I'd also register my no, and add, for the same reasons that many other have, there's no matching of the revenue. So we've got no revenue to pay for this. We'd have to take from some other spot, and we're also not... we're also not responsible for the legislation. So, much like healthcare, it's a provincial jurisdiction, the province should pay, and I know we have supported some healthcare initiatives, or I think rightly so, but having said that, it's always a slippery slope when you are supporting things with people's... with taxpayers' dollars, that you're not responsible for making the rules around. So for that reason, I'm a definite no, unless at some point in the future there was some very, very clear articulation, understanding of, here's dollars for you to do this, and there's a limited amount of funds, and it was well-understood by the business community, the electorate, NOS, and the province, that, you know, that it's just a flow-through. So I would have to say no. Okay, so I've got councillor Cushing with his hand up. Councillor Cushing?
Yes, Trevor. I had to step away for just a few seconds, but on my way back, I heard you mentioned... I was a no on this, right?
Yes, you were. Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
We've got your course. So we've got five nos and a yes, and again, the points that we made, and our CAO is recording those points. So if there's no further conversation on this topic, we'll move on, and the interest of completing the whole thing.
So question number two reads, "Are there challenges or barriers that may impact your ability," that's Modi's ability, "to meet the requirements set out in the Accessibility Act?" And so the NSFM has indicated they haven't collected data, but we have talked about this at length at the Association of Municipal Administrators board level, and there are challenges. Largely, the challenges are around the fact that we're having this conversation in the absence of approved standards, and we already know with respect to the built environment that we have a talent issue in Nova Scotia. There is a severe shortage of qualified building officials to enforce the existing legislation. Once we add the accessibility standards, there will be training required and additional demands on the already scarce financial resources. So at the AMA level, we feel the two barriers are the absence of clearly defined standards or standards at all, and the shortage of human resources to conduct the work.
And money on here. And finance.
Yes, but with respect to municipalities and meeting the requirements of the Act, it would be finances to make amendments to our own buildings, but with respect to enforcing the Act, it's a little... yeah, it's a little bit different, but yes, money is always a barrier, right?
Okay. So I'm gonna say that that sounds... if you could just paraphrase what you've said as a response, I think that sounds good, but I'll ask the remainder of council if that's... if they're approving of that way forward. Need to centers? Does that seem reasonable? Lauren's got his hand up. I'm gonna say that's reasonable without going, taking the time to go around and ask everybody, but I'm not seeing anybody that has an issue with that. So that's how we'll move forward with that question. Thanks so much for your input.
So I've just summarized it, Mr. Chairman, to read, "Modi council submits that the absence of standards, scarce human resources for inspections and enforcement, and financial constraints are barriers."
Yes, I think that's reasonable. I think everybody else is good too. Yeah, let's move on.
Are there any accessible initiatives you would like to explore or support within your municipal unit but are unable to?
Comments, municipal councillors?
So, Mr. Chairman, I did query the staff, the team at Modi, and we did, you know, aside from this being new and everybody trying to navigate, I would say no, you know, at this time, no.
And that's good news. So we can indicate that, certainly. And it's an important thing to... accessibility is tremendously important for...
It is.
I'm waving.
Oh, sorry, Patty. Yeah.
It's okay. One of the things that I'm sure all areas are going to have difficulty with, and that's the fact that we have many historical properties in Nova Scotia. Our towns are full of historical buildings, our downtown is historic, and for a lot of those buildings to become accessible is going to be quite a challenge, and I don't feel that that's really been addressed. And using our own Cape for Shoe as an example, where, you know, that we want to make that a tourism site, and we want everybody to be able to come, but the building as it exists now is totally inaccessible, like being able to get through small doors and small rooms and upstairs, et cetera. So that's going to be a challenge for a lot of businesses that are historic, and it's not really been addressed as to how are we going to do that? Like, how are people going to do that without... especially if they've been designated as a historic site? So to me, that's something that has to be brought to attention, and plans have to be discussed, like what takes priority here? If something's been designated as historic, then are you allowed to... like, how do you... what comes first? The Accessibility Act or the historic designation? And I haven't really heard much about that. And Victoria, maybe you can... maybe I just don't... it's not ignorance, I just don't have enough information at this point.
Sure. So it's a great question, councillor Durkey, and there is a joint working committee, which has representatives from the province, the NSFM and the AMA on it, and that working committee is largely around the human rights decision that was handed down, requiring all restaurants in Nova Scotia to create a barrier-free environment from the front-entry point of a restaurant or food service establishment, all the way through to accessing the washroom facilities. And so that very point is coming to light as we seek to, in Nova Scotia, comply with the decision of the courts to make that happen. And so what I'm recording in your responses is, is that the new legislation, along with the recent human rights decision, will highlight challenges in marrying the proper intent of accessibility with Nova Scotia's built heritage environment.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you.
I almost think that would have been... that should be in question number four.
Yep.
I think that was a great point, Patty, for question number four.
Thank you. You're right. Absolutely.
Very good. Having said that, so we'll insert that in question four, is my understanding. Good point, Patty. And are there additional comments around question four? We'll skip, perhaps, right to that, if that's all right. Is there anything else about accessibility you would like to discuss? I'm not hearing anything, so we'll move on to question five, when the CAO is able to catch up with the typing.
Okay, the next section is around affordable housing, and this is where the chairman, councillor Cunningham, indicated that, you know, by and large, this dialogue is a little bit new for municipally-elected officials, particularly officials who have come to municipal government since housing was separated from municipal affairs back in the late 1990s, early 2000s, and now housing has been rolled back into municipal affairs. So I think everybody knows that, you know, the dialogue around affordable housing is not new in Nova Scotia, and the application of it, you know, largely depends on, you know, what type of community you live in and what the dynamics are in your community. So they're consulting in a number of areas. So participants are asked to provide input on the four proposed options for increasing the supply of affordable housing in municipalities. So for further information on each option is provided below. So there's a notion of inclusionary zoning, which would suggest that municipal planning strategies and land use bylaws should provide for a mix of housing stock. So rather than just calling something residential and then discussing the density levels within that, it should also discuss the types of housing stock. So the proposed approach, "The department is currently exploring inclusionary zoning as a tool to support increased supply of affordable housing. Although no decisions have been made regarding form, content, or application, the following options are under consideration." So to councillor Cushing's points earlier, this is very much early-stage brainstorming. We have some ideas, and we just want your feedback on those ideas. So very, very early stages. So voluntary and mandatory inclusionary zoning as options. Application of inclusionary zoning should be applied to specific forms of development, and making inclusionary zoning powers either open or well-defined in municipal legislation. So the department would like to better understand the level of interest in having inclusionary zoning, as outlined above, as a voluntary or mandatory power, or a hybrid of the two. We are also interested in your opinion on how inclusionary zoning should be applied. Should it be site-specific, by subdivision, both, and on a level of direction provided by the province? So question number one, "Do you feel that affordability and supply of housing is an issue that should be addressed by your municipality?"
So, Ms. Brooks, what I'll suggest is that we use the same process, that we go around and ask people yes or no, and then also they can provide some commentary for us to record. So that seems reasonable. We'll start off with Patty. Councillor Durkey.
Yes, I think we should address that.
Very good. Councillor Allen.
Well, to be honest with you, I'm still digesting this.
And that's understandable. It's a new topic. It was new to me yesterday, and I'm still not nearly where we'd like to be, but certainly councillor, certainly the CAO did indicate that it's fairly new for staff as well, so I guess this is just a very, very general question that...
It's a general question. Do you feel affordability and supply of housing is an issue that should be addressed by your municipality? So, I see, again, I'm...
Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in there.
Certainly.
Part of the context that I inadvertently forgot to share is that, under the Municipal Government Act, when you look at council's powers, you know that there was a significant change with respect to the things that council can spend money on, but typically, housing is provided for, in terms of legislative authority, by the province of Nova Scotia. Municipal governments have agreements with the province on some types of housing situation, but the province of Nova Scotia is the governing authority with respect to housing in Nova Scotia.
So are we back to this as a type of downloading again?
I'm not sure if it's that, or if the province wants to work with municipalities to find a way, between the two orders of government, to create an ecosystem where investment in affordable housing can happen.
Yes.
And I understand that, but this... the question specifically says, you know, it's not saying that they want to work with us. Do they believe that our municipality should be responsible? Should, you know, should we address it? I don't believe we should be addressing it alone. So I guess my answer would be no, with the caveat that I do believe we should be part of the solution, but I don't think it should fall directly solely on the municipality.
Councillor Durkey also wanted to comment there?
Yes. Yes. I mean, I agree with Dan. I don't think it's something that should be... I think we should be addressing it, because we have to look at our municipal planning strategy to see where things would fit, but I don't want to take, like, full responsible for it. I think it's something you have to work in partnership to see where it would fit, right? And so that's where I'm saying, yes, we have to address this, because we have to work together on this. But no, do I think we want to take full responsibility for the whole thing? Absolutely not.
So back to councillor Durkey, my answer to the particular question put in front of us is no, but I definitely would like my comment, or like our comments heard, because I'm saying the same thing as councillor Durkey. I just... I'm reading the question that's put in front of me, and it's specifically saying, should it be addressed by our municipality? I don't believe it should. I believe we should be part of it, and I think that should be no.
And I couldn't agree more. You know, and I say, yes, it has to be addressed, because it's part of a, you know, the whole municipal strategy part. But if this is, again, specifically our own responsibility, no.
Well, the question is essentially making it our responsibility. That's why I'm saying no, but I agree with your comments 100%.
Yeah, yeah. So it has to be clarified, like, we have to...
Right.
That I said yes, but then, like you, I need to come back and clarify what I really meant here.
So do you want to record that, like Daniel, as a no, but you'd be willing... if the question were different, would you be willing to say yes?
Yeah, oh, yes. No, no. I believe we need to address it. I just don't believe we should be addressing it alone, and this question doesn't give us the option of addressing it with the province. If this is from... this is essentially asking us if we think it should be addressed by our municipality. I don't believe it should solely by our municipality, but I am in agreement that we have to be a part of it. I think it's important that we're a part of it. I just... I don't want to get caught in one of those, you know, you said, yeah, you'll take it over, and that's where we land.
And I'm just noticing that Victoria's recording it in that way, so that... so the yes or no may not be a necessity in this case, do you know what I mean? Like, to record it, but she's kind of recording it, so she's got, to this point, I can read it off the screen. Modi council does not want to address this, even as a responsible order of government, however, it is agreed that municipal government can be part of a broader solution through municipal planning strategies, land use bylaws, and other municipal tools, so...
I support that 100%.
Yeah, that clarifies what... the answer is tough to answer... the question is tough to answer directly, yes or no.
Exactly. I think that's the issue. It's a very difficult question to answer. Yeah.
Yeah, depending on how it's interpreted. So I'll just go through, so I'm not recording yes or no, but because the CAO's recorded it that way, I think that's okay. John, comments?
No, I'm real leery of jumping in this. I think it's more of a potential responsibility, however, through our municipal planning strategy, which is going to have to be looked at in the next term anyway, that is something that's going to have to be addressed, and there could also be something coming out of there like different planning zones that we could initiate and stuff like that, but when it gets into the municipal government, jumping into that in dollar figures, well, I had mentioned that the pieces of the pie are quite small as they are, and that's just another way that I think to counter Allen, that it would be downloaded. So I'm a no, but maybe yes, if it was, depending on what it looked like. So take that as a safe...
I think we hear the opinion. Moving on next, councillor Cushing.
Thank you, Trevor.
I certainly agree with Daniel's interpretation of the question. Is it a downloading exercise? I think a lot of these questions that are being asked of us today are very cleverly structured to get the answers that the province is looking for. And no, we can't take that responsibility. So again, I think this is a good exercise, that we're able to debate it and discuss it. And let's just be careful, let's make sure we really understand the questions. And Counselor Allen really pointed that out very good, in a very good way. So, you know, affordable housing is definitely a critical aspect of this whole, of the municipality as a whole, right? You know, one thing that never was addressed, and I'll just make mention of it now because it's not, it probably won't come up, but I used to do a lot of property management for different, different people inside and outside the country. And some of the apartments that are, that I had to go collect rent from were, I'm telling you, they were certainly, they were, they certainly weren't for as long as them fit to live in, but people were living in them. So I think, you know, although affordable housing is critical and important, I also think that some type of stronger bylaws is going to be put in place to make sure the apartments that are being rented now are up to a good standard. Not a minimum standard, they get away with this minimum standard thing. And I'm telling you, minimum standards is very minimum. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor LeBlanc?
Yeah, I'm with Daniel. You know, I'm just wondering if it's past the buck, you know, but I'm a no.
Okay, thank you. And I like Counselor LeBlanc. I'm generally a no, but like others, depending on what it looked like, I'm all for, you know, certainly working to make sure that the affordability and supply of housing is, you know, right in the municipality's environment. Having said that, we all do know that it's a serious issue because we've seen on our development report, the cost of new housing, it's tremendous. You know, I don't know, it's $200 to $300 per square foot now, that's my understanding. I'm not a contractor, but I do hear that those figures bandied about. So any event, the cost of new housing and existing housing and renovation is, and repair is tremendous. So this is something that, while it's provincial responsibility, I do agree with what everybody's saying is that we need to talk about it more and see, you know, how we might help out without it becoming a purely municipal responsibility. So thank you, everybody. Pardon me? Certainly, yes.
This is going to be quick. This, from the 30,000-foot level, to me, it also comes down to its staffing and time issue. Like municipalities are only staffed and equipped to do so much. And we certainly know each and every one of us have on a plate right now. So that's another reason behind all that because the more you download on a smaller municipality or any municipality, the less likely, like you can only be spread so thin. And we've got a lot on our plate.
Absolutely. Thank you for those comments, Deputy Ward. So I'm not seeing any additional hands up. So let's move on to the next question, if that's all right. Bye, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The rest of the questions from two to eight, they are the types of questions, let me back up. So the provincial staff who were on this conversation from the housing side of the department indicated to us yesterday that these are, these are very much ideas, brainstorming issues. And the Municipal Government Act requires planning advisory committees for very specific reasons. And one of the reasons is to vet this kind of material with communities. And so it's my recommendation that we actually push back a little bit here and not answer the questions, but say to the province, provide us with some draft documentation, consult with our PACs and our councils on that draft documentation, and let's see where we land.
I would say I'm seeing a thumbs up and some heads moving in the yes direction. And I would agree because at this juncture, I don't think we're prepared to have these conversations because I'm not just certain what inclusionary zoning, all the details of it. So, I mean, I wouldn't want for our council to give an opinion that's not as informed as it might be. I'll say that. So excellent idea and we can move that forward to PAC and push them a little bit for some additional documentation. So to everybody's point, I think everybody's made that point, maybe especially Counselor Cushing. You know, it's, a lot of this stuff is rushed, but I think that this section, to your point, is too rushed and we just don't know enough about it. So all good points, I'd agree. And I'd look for others to comment or else we're going to sort of say that's the agreed move forward. Not seeing any hands up, so I'm assuming that's the, I'm going to say that's the way forward. Thank you. So the next question, next section, secondary and backyard suites. Madam CAO?
So there was really interesting dialogue around this, depending on which municipality you were representing yesterday, because as some of you are aware, in some communities, you know, availability of land and availability of housing stock where there's already high density is driving this. And so again, I feel strongly that this is a matter to go through PACs. Our planner was not engaged on this. I feel strongly that draft documentation should be provided and we should have specific consultation with our PACs and our planners on this.
I would agree with that assertion. Everybody else in agreement? Yes, yes. Very good. I'm not hearing any, anybody say no to that. I think, I think that's a reasoned way forward. Thank you, Madam CAO.
I'll come back and wordsmith that.
Certainly.
Modular housing, again.
Oh, we've got a question by Counselor Durkey. Sorry for the interruption.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, don't apologize. I just want to comment that I found the information that was shared very interesting and that it's certainly something that, to be given consideration. You know, whole concept of like the secondary or backyard suites has a lot to do or would be extremely helpful to, with the seniors in our community. And we know that that's growing, the number of seniors and the lack of accommodations for seniors. And I know a friend of mine actually just has done this, built this onto their home so that their dad can go live with them, which I think if it works, it would be great. However, that being said, there, I know Greg raised the question about sewage and water and taxation. There's so many different aspects of this that need to be considered. However, it's a really good discussion that we need to start having.
So thank you, Counselor Durkey. I think you hit the nail on the head with that comment because I too, I found it tremendously interesting. It's just that my depth of knowledge around that so shallow at this point that, you know, couldn't really make as meaningful, having as meaningful an input as I'd like to have had yesterday. But I think the mechanism which our CAOs put forward to go through staff and the PAC to work through this a little bit more and bring it back to council is a brilliant one. Thank you.
Oh, I couldn't agree more. I think we have to look at where would this fit in the whole municipal planning strategy. And I think it could, but again, it has to be specific to certain areas. The same with the modular housing as well. Where would this type of thing fit? And I think that's something that PAC really should discuss.
Thank you. So the next section, I'm just wondering, I think, yeah, there's modular housing. I think that follows in the same vein, the same approach that we take with the other pieces.
Yep. And, you know, really even the shared housing, you know, essentially the four elements under this piece, you know, had the same depth and breadth of conversation. And, you know, we have to involve our planners and our PACs in this conversation.
Agreed. I think council shares that opinion.
Okay, so additional comments. So I captured something in the very beginning regarding question number one under the code. Please clarify if quote "provincially defined" means defined by the province of Nova Scotia or a universal code across Nova Scotia. And regarding question one, some flexibility in adopting in whole or in part. So I think what I heard from council was that there needed to be a framework created that allowed each municipal council to have a way to customize it and to make it fit their own, their own context. There were additional items recommended by the NSFM, and they speak largely to the priorities that they have, as well as some of the things we've experienced since the state of emergency. So the NSFM is recommending that we provide a comment around holding electronic meetings, that we provide a comment on electronic delivery of tax notices. The NSFM plans to put forward a comment on deferral of property taxes, which I do not support as your CAO. And then, of course, the NSFM wants the province to give attention to their resolutions. In addition to that, I indicated that there were other issues that we might want to bring forward. So I'm going to open that email that I sent on June 19th to council. So in additional comments, we've experienced recently a sharp increase in our deficits to housing authorities. And at a recent, I think NSFM, mayor's warden, CAO's engagement, as well as at the AMA board level, we've realized that the agreements on the housing complexes that we deficit fund, the agreements are old, sometimes 50 years old, and that there's a separate agreement for each housing unit. So there needs to be some work done to address the issues around municipal funding of housing authorities and the structure of the agreements, as well as duty to consult during provincial state of emergencies. So while the NSFM and the AMA have consistently sent a message to Halifax that we need to be and are not being consulted on the decisions with respect to the state of emergency, this is a great opportunity to reiterate that. So maybe, Mr. Chairman, if we could go through the NSFM pieces, because if you agree with an NSFM piece, it's ideal to echo it so that the province understands that we're supporting our advocacy body. So do you want me to walk through each one, or do you want to do that, Mr. Chair?
Well, you can, why don't you read each one? We'll maintain the same practice and I'll go through and ask for yay or nay on each of the items. Is that reasonable? I see Patty's got her hand up. Patty, Counselor Durkey?
Yes, I agree completely with Victoria, particularly during this pandemic and the fact that, well, actually, it's not just that. It's just I was having a discussion, actually with Pam about this and that, you know, the NSFM have been lobbying for, on different topics that that the municipalities have brought forward. They've reduced the number of, of, what's the word I'm looking for?
Resolutions, yeah.
To make it more direct and specific. And it's been a real challenge to get the province to respond on those or to support us on any of those. And it's really disappointing to see that when, you know, a province-wide group of people, and I'm not talking the board, I'm talking about the councillors, you know, the results of these resolution meetings, come forward with items and the province just says, nope, nope, you know, and particularly during this pandemic with the fact that we have over and over asked for information that will help us adopt to changes in policy, once changes are being made by the province in terms of opening things up, that we are not being informed and we are not being asked for opinions on anything. They're just going ahead and doing that without consulting with us. And it's been really unfair to all these organizations who are frontline folk. And they were the ones that have to put these procedures into practice, like opening of our parks, for example, was one. Like, you know, they make the announcement, but they don't let us know that it's coming. So that's, that's been a real challenge. And it's getting to a point where I've said, you know, NSFM has lobbied hard on some of these things because we've helped the province by not having 49 municipalities going directly at the province. And I think it's time that that changes. I think we have to start saying, okay, enough. Like, you're not listening to us and what do the, and the municipalities need to start speaking for themselves.
Thank you, Counselor Durkey. So Counselor, CAO or Brooks, if you could begin by reading the first one, we'll go through and see what we think about each of them.
Sure. So the first matter is holding electronic council meetings. So right now, Minister Porter's order requires that we meet only virtually. We are not allowed to meet in person right now. And until that order is amended, that's the way it's going to be. And some municipal units have really seen some advantages to this under certain circumstances. And so the NSFM has submitted, "A Canadian provinces explicitly enable electronic attendance at meetings of council" via legislation. Given recent technological advances and the clear direction of other Canadian jurisdictions, it is recommended that the province of Nova Scotia amend the Municipal Government Act to enable electronic attendance at meetings. Now, my comment to that is that the mechanism with, for the permission needs to be specified in the MGA. So I feel like the MGA should, if it gives permission to do it, it should only be by bylaw. So that you, each council can set out the parameters that, yes, we'll do it, but we'll only do it this way.
Okay, so we've heard what it's all about and we'll also add in, if it's all right by everybody, the understanding that Ms. Brooks has forwarded in terms of that only if it's, I guess, enforceable through a bylaw adopted at a municipal level. So we'll go around the around the table, the virtual table, I guess, and start off with Counselor Durkey. In favor of such an amendment to the legislation?
I have to think about this one. I do think that we should be allowed to meet via Zoom, but yes, I think there should be certain instances where it is allowed and at other times where it isn't. So I guess looking in that response, it should, it has, there has to be specific guidelines. And if that's the case, then maybe the bylaw is the direction that we need to go.
So yes or no, generally?
I know I'm talking in circles. Yes.
Yes. Okay. Counselor Allen?
I'll be, I'll be less vague and I'll just go with yes.
Don Cunningham? Deputy Warden? Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I have to give you a second to click my button, Mr. Chair. I'm a yes, but, there's some circumstances where I think it's if it comes up like the COVID-19 thing, where there's a need to, I don't want to see it become a norm.
If I can just interject, I think that would be, could be handled by bylaw. Not certain we can hear you, Counselor Cunningham. Okay, well, we'll move on to, I think we've got Counselor Cunningham as a yes, but if he wants to make some additional comment, we can make that at the end.
I got my hand up, he's yes.
Yes, very good. Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
And I too am a yes. Any additional comment before we move on? Very good, okay.
Just, just.
I do have a question. Did everyone hear what I had to say?
No, John, you might want to repeat it. You trailed off at the end.
Yeah, see, my answer was a yes, but, and for the simple fact that we don't know when we're going to have strong internet service all across the province. That's my big concern. But there's a lot to be said for face-to-face meetings, but there's also times when you need to meet via teleconference. Hopefully you heard it that time.
I think if I'm understanding it, that it may be that individual, like we wouldn't have necessarily a, I mean, it could be for a whole meeting, but it could be like an individual council member that's away or something like that and they could join. But again, that would be all talked about with the bylaw. And I agree with our CAO's comment that it should be enabled, but each council should be able to have a bylaw to control their circumstance. Because there are issues like Deputy Warden Cunningham's brought up about, you know, the quality of internet and a whole bunch of other factors to consider, so. So I'm not, pardon me?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Warden Cunningham. So we've got all yeses on that and the commentary's been recorded, certainly. So.
A quick question, Mr. Chair. Since Minister Porter's is running through this, we had already agreed that we would be meeting for our next council meeting in July in person. So will we still be meeting virtually?
Yes, so the goal to meet, to come together in person for July 8th was subject to A, the ministerial order, and B, having the work done in council chambers. And we have neither.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. The next question, perhaps we can move on to that.
Electronic delivery of tax notices. Four Canadian provinces explicitly enable electronic delivery of tax notices. An additional five Canadian provinces do not specify the method of delivery. Only Nova Scotia specifies that tax notices must be delivered by mail or in person. Given technological advances and the clear direction of other Canadian jurisdictions, it is recommended that the province of Nova Scotia amend the Municipal Government Act to enable electronic delivery of tax notices. So to be clear, that's not saying it will require they be delivered electronically. It gives permission for that to be an option.
Okay, so.
I'm a yes.
Having said that, yeah, we'll go through. Patty's a yes. Counselor Allen?
Oh, you're muted, Dan.
Oh, you're muted, yeah.
Patty was fast this time. Yes, I'm a yes as well.
Okay, Deputy Warden?
I'm a yes as well if we can get superior internet service.
Yeah. Counselor Cushing?
Well, I'm a yes, as long as we're able to mail out to, for taxes that people don't have computers. There's still a lot who don't have access to computers or cell phones and whatnot. So, you know, we got to make sure everybody's covered.
Yeah, I think this would be like, my understanding is this would be like most things, that you'd opt into electronic delivery, not, not out of the, not out of the, and out of the mail delivery. So you'd have to say that you wanted it by electronic means. Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Yes, and I too would say yes. So we've got unanimity there. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the next question. Thanks.
Deferral of property taxes. The Nova Scotia Municipal Government Act only allows taxes to be deferred in special cases based on low income. It would have been helpful if the MGA had given broader permissions, allowing genuine deferrals to be provided as options to homeowners and business owners in times of emergency, such as the present global pandemic. The MGA could be amended to grant these powers. Corresponding pieces of legislation in some of the other Canadian provinces do afford municipalities broader powers to offer deferral programs. So as your CAO, I am not in support of this. Municipalities cannot have deficits more than one year and have very tight controls on their debt ratios. When deferrals are provided, they come at a cost to those who are paying their taxes. If deferrals are allowed by legislation, it will create expectations that are difficult to manage.
Very good. Thanks for the information. I think we'll do the same. Let's go around and call on Counselor Durkey for her comments. And yes or no as to whether this supports the FCM position? Counselor Durkey, I'm not hearing you.
That's because I'm moving my mouth and nothing's happening.
Okay, we hear you now.
Okay, so they're saying, I just want to make sure whether my yes or no. So yes is agreeing with NSFM to ask for deferral? And no is no, we don't want deferrals?
Correct. No. Counselor Allen?
I'm a no.
Deputy Warden?
I'm a no based on what the CAO recommended.
Yeah. Counselor Cushing?
I am a no also. Victoria makes some very good points here.
Yeah, Counselor LeBlanc?
It's a no.
And also a no, we're cooking with gas, that's two in a row that, this. Okay, we'll move on to the next question if there's no further comment.
NSFM resolutions. COVID-19 has had a significant impact on municipalities. However, the NSFM's ongoing requests about the property tax cap, extended producer responsibility, new funding program for roads, municipal modernization, and municipal finances are still top priorities for the NSFM and its members. NSFM works on these files, NSM's work on these files continues even throughout the pandemic. Municipalities are encouraged to use the additional comments section of their workbook to raise these issues with DMAH and to emphasize their ongoing importance. And I would concur that we should leverage this opportunity to say all of what we've said, but don't forget this.
Agree.
Okay, agreed by, agreed by Patty, Counselor Durkey, Counselor Allen?
Agreed.
Deputy Warden?
Yes.
Yeah. Counselor Cushing?
I'm a yes.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Wow, three in a row. Thanks so much, everybody. Are there additional questions?
The only other additional comment that I was recommending that I forgot to summarize for council was also to take this opportunity to send home some points about rural internet. And I want to read you what I wrote about rural internet. If I can find it. Rural internet, okay. The rural internet projects are taking too long to roll out. Develop Nova Scotia is not collaborative with municipalities. So in addition to duty to consult and the housing deficits, I think we should also take this opportunity to make a brief comment on internet.
Okay, so we'll do the same thing. Patty, in agreement with that?
Agree, wholeheartedly.
Counselor Allen?
Oh, 100% agree.
Okay. And we're, Deputy Warden? Counselor Cunningham? I'll call on Counselor Cunningham again at the end. Counselor Cushing?
I'm here.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, we've got a yes and a yes. Counselor LeBlanc?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Yeah, and me as well. So there we go, absolutely.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
So there being no further business, I'll look for somebody to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
There's been a mover. Any additional comments or questions before we dismiss?
Gern?
Thank you, Counselor Cunningham, for chairing the meeting. Some of you may or may not know I'm at work today and I'm unable to attend a meeting while looking at some documents and trying to control a meeting. So thank you very much once again.
Okay, you're very welcome. Thanks, everybody. It was, I think it was a good meeting and fulsome discussion and lots of good feedback for the FCM and the province. So thanks again.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.